17, 2022, the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Perry.
Yeah, thank you. Please join me in the large prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will now ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilman Perry?
Here.
Councilmember Reesner?
Here.
Councilmember Spar?
Here.
Councilmember Thacker?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Present.
Councilmember Leppard?
Here.
Let the record show all seven members of council are present. Minutes from December 5th, regular and committee of the whole meetings, as well as December 12th, special meeting minutes. Yes, Clerk of Council.
I just want to clarify that an agenda change memo has been sent out and copies given to councilmembers with two minor changes in the minutes, and that is what they have in front of them now.
Thank you. Any questions or additions on the changes that the clerk sent? Okay, seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We are now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
No report made, Madam President.
Thank you. Long Community Planning, Councilmember Leppard.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Perry.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Wilkins.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
No report, Madam President.
And Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Spar.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anyone see the need for another committee of the whole meeting? Okay, we will move on to reports of the officers. Her Honor, Mayor Don Yonatuno.
Thank you, Madam President. I was hoping to keep my report brief this evening as my Christmas gift to all of you, so I'll try to be quick. This afternoon, we received this plaque from Mary Lewis on behalf of Jim Stoltz. It states, it's for our 200th anniversary, and it states year of construction, 1938. Tiffin City Building, Tiffin City Hall erected 1938 to 1940 by Hostler Brothers Construction at a cost of $185,000, funded in part by a Public Works Administration grant, architects Lynn Troxel, George Netcher, and Edwards &amp; Porter as lead designer. And so we'll be putting this on our building shortly. And so we appreciate them giving this to us, and I promised Mary I would read that this evening. Tonight is the third and final reading for the City Council to approve our 2023 budget. Chief Chapel has brought to our attention that, if you'll remember, we have an ambulance that's out because the engine blew, and we were expecting a new ambulance with ARPA funds in 2024. So we've gotten ahold of an ambulance that will be ready shortly. So we're going to move our ARPA funds forward for that ambulance now so that we can get back on the road. We will still be on order for the other one, but at this point, we need to make sure we're keeping the citizens safe and that we have working ambulances on the road. Because we still don't know when the ambulance that's out of order, we don't even know when an engine's going to get here yet. And so we need to do something because we still don't know when it'll be ready. And so that's how we're progressing with that. Updates on events. Seneca County Fair Lights, if you missed it. It was finished yesterday, so you can't go see it anymore. They are done. December 29th is the final celebration event of our 200th anniversary. The event will kick off at 5:00 PM at the Renaissance, and they'll be doing a potato chip drop at the East Green. Lights will be up all over the place, and so be sure to come downtown on the 29th. City Hall will be closed on December 26th and January 2nd. Our next council meeting will be on Tuesday, the 3rd. Classic Hits and Faustoria invited me over there this Thursday to sing with the Faustoria Mayor and the Findlay Mayor, and Nick's going on my behalf, and I've encouraged Nick to sing with them. So let me know if he does or not. Upcoming events in January, I'll be sitting on the annual Main Street accreditation on January 5th. Nick and I will be attending the Tree Commission Academy, being held locally this year at the NCO ESC on the 11th and 12th. And then Councilmember Perry reached out to me that he has a special guest here this evening that he'd like to introduce.
I do. Thank you for your time, Mayor. So I have, my wife and I have been a part of Smile for the last six years, ever since my son was six months old, and my mentee is here tonight. And he's a senior actually at Calvert, and he's got a really cool senior project that I thought we could maybe collaborate a little bit with him on. He came to us and was asking for ideas on things that he can do. So I'm going to invite DJ up to the podium. He can kind of talk about what his project is and kind of what he hopes to accomplish by being here tonight.
Yeah, so for my senior project, excuse me, I wanted to find a way to involve the community with my senior project. And I thought a good way to do that would be through a service club here in Tiffin. So basically, I just want to get a group of, I'm thinking mostly high school kids, just together to, once a month, starting out, just go out into the community wherever it's needed and kind of just help out where we can. And, you know, as time goes on, if we have enough people and there's the want there, then, you know, do it more than once a month, you know, twice a month, or, you know, even once a week if we get to the point where we have enough people that want to. And so basically, I just need help. I need to figure out how to get the word out and how to get people to, you know, do it and, you know, basically like market it to the community.
Yeah, so some of the things that we were talking about, you know, some of the ideas we came up with were, maybe this group would go to a nursing home once a month, and each of the kids could be assigned to someone within the nursing home that might want companionship. Maybe if we have some kind of festival that we need cleaning up after, from a city perspective, we can get ahold of the service club that DJ wants to create. So just opportunities for, you know, for DJ to put his club into action. I'm trying to get his club down at Big Mike's to start working every day if they want. But yeah, just thought it'd be cool to get the word out of something that he's trying to get started here. And it will be really kind of forming here in the next month or so, so. Cool. Anything else you want to add?
Nope.
Cool. All right, thanks, DJ. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you for coming.
You can take off. You don't got to hang out. Okay. See you, bud. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to us. That concludes my report.
Awesome. Any questions for the mayor? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to report that I've received and have on file a new form of a cooperative development agreement by and among the City of Tiffin, Seneca County Treasurer, Tiffin Riverfront Development LLC, and Poppy Bank regarding an energy special improvement district and special assessments for 10 East Market Street, which replaces the previous form of cooperative development agreement and tax lien agreement on file in my office. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions for the clerk? Okay, seeing none, Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
Thank you. First, I want to follow up our discussion that we had during the Committee of the Whole. There was a question that was asked about the veto power by the mayor and as it may apply to Resolution 22-43. That was the resolution for the appointment of a member to the Board of Health. And as I explained, the role of council is to confirm that appointment. And when the issue was raised about whether that was subject to veto, you think generally the mayor has that ability. But this is one of those examples where, in life, you should always read the instructions, you know? And I've learned that the hard way many times in the law and in daily life. So you look at Section 5.04, veto power, and this is what our charter says. It says, "Each ordinance and resolution," and that's what we're talking about here, "passed by the council shall be presented to the mayor or left at the mayor's office." And probably, we don't need to read anything more than that. So each resolution passed by council, I think that if we're talking about if it's voted down, it's not passed by council. So then, it does not fall to her to have any right of veto. So that's the way the charter, and I would interpret that, that if you vote no, a majority vote no, not to confirm an appointment to the Board of Health, then there is nothing to bring to her to veto. So it is not subject to veto. So hopefully that clears things up and
Sure does.
as you move forward, make your determination on the merits of the appointment. I have with us tonight David Rogers. You may recall that David is an attorney for the developer of the Tiffin Riverfront Development Project. And as you know, there is a lot of legislation before you this evening regarding the Riverfront Development Project, and he has a report regarding progress made by the developer. So I'll turn it over to David.
Thank you, Law Director, members of council, mayor, president of council, administration. Happy to be here. I think this is my fifth trip to the City of Tiffin, and it's a pleasant drive. Wish it was daylight longer, but I'll try to make this quick. I am the person that requested that the legislation that you're going to hopefully take off the table tonight was tabled on December 5th. And that was in part based on conversations I had with Mr. Howard about the progress of the financing for this development. And what all of us wanted to see was more certainty as to the fact that there would be lenders out there who are willing to finance the project. And the financing of the project, the main component is a bank loan, a senior loan. My clients asked me not to disclose the name of the lender, but as the Law Director knows, they have presented to Tiffin Riverfront Development a senior loan term sheet, and it's been accepted by my client. And in addition, there's a PACES lender who has presented a senior loan, excuse me, a PACES loan term sheet that's also been accepted by my client. And that's why now it's appropriate to have this legislation considered, and if it's your pleasure, passed by council. With respect to the bank, the bank has more than $7 billion of assets, more than 100 offices in Ohio, Kentucky, West Virginia, and a couple of the states towards the East Coast, so it's a substantial financial institution. And so that is something that I think everyone's been waiting on. Certainly, my client has been waiting on that. And now that they have that in place, they believe they're ready to move forward with getting the financing accomplished first quarter of 2023. I know everyone was asking questions earlier, would it be able to happen this year? Some of us may have advised that we didn't think that was going to happen necessarily, but now those things are in place. And so we would expect first quarter of 2023 to have the financial closings, and that would allow construction to begin. What the financial institutions, both the PACES lender and the senior lender, the bank, have wanted as well is to know that the City of Tiffin and the City Council are ready to approve the PACES financing. Obviously, if you don't approve the PACES legislation, and I'm sorry, there are five pieces of legislation for that, the two resolutions and three of the ordinances. That's just a function of Ohio law. The PACES lender needs that to be adopted so that they can move forward and have their closing because their security is a special assessment on the site at the request of the site owner. And then with respect to the TIF, that financing is also an important component to both those lenders, so they want to see that approved by the City Council. And this is not necessarily the way a lot of commercial developments go. Sometimes the TIF ordinances get passed later, sometimes the PACES ordinances get passed later. But in this case, that's the way it's worked out. So that's why you have the legislation in front of you this evening. And then I will go ahead and say that my firm presented some suggested changes to three of the pieces of legislation. And in discussions with the city attorney, we agreed that it's not necessary to make any changes to Ordinance 22-104, which is the TIF ordinance today. Because what's going to happen is the TIF, which allows for service payments in lieu of taxes to be made by the developer, is going to be financed through monetization is another way to put it. But those special assessment payments will get assigned to the Warren County Port Authority. They'll issue bonds. The bond proceeds will then be put into a bucket with a trustee and then allowed to be drawn on for the public improvements that will be agreed upon between the developer and the city. So we're at the stage now where adoption of that legislation would be very helpful to move it forward. And happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
Transfer of the property, will that take place by the end of the year or first quarter?
That will take place by the end of January.
Any other questions? Member Perry?
Just one question. I guess the Director of Law kind of hit on it. That we'll revisit it again with the TIF money. I'm assuming you're talking about like the parking lot and stuff, what we wanted to see that money spent on. If we do approve this tonight, do we, I don't know, could they never do it? We don't have anything to kind of hold their feet to the fire that we are going to get a deal done, or?
The answer, and David could elaborate on it, is that they need our agreement, and this is a separate document, a cooperative agreement that will be authorized by council later on once we negotiate how that TIF proceeds, how it will be used, applied to the project.
Okay.
That's correct.
That answers my questions, then.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Just a couple other items. As I have done sometimes in the past, wanted to give you just a brief glimpse of your legislation by the numbers for the last 21 years. You have 119 ordinances that you introduced this year. That is the third most in the last 21 years. In 2020, you introduced 142 ordinances. That was the high in the last, since 2002. The low was in 2008, you introduced 70 ordinances. Six times in the last 21 years, you have introduced over 100 ordinances. So you are still very busy and very active. Maybe that's, you can tell your constituents that you're not asleep. You are actively involved in the governance of the City of Tiffin. And the last time I have, I would like to have you move to go into executive session at this time for a brief session with me, to confer with me, the Law Director, for the purpose of considering a dispute involving pending court action.
Councilmember Leppard.
Thank you, Madam President. This time, I would ask for this body to go into executive session to confer with the Director of Law concerning a dispute that is subject to pending court action.
Thank you. There's a motion to go into executive session to confer with the Law Director concerning a dispute that is subject to pending court action. Is there a second? Councilmember Spar?
I second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll and the vote, please, for the motion.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leppard?
Yes.
Motion passes with a vote of seven to zeros. We will adjourn into executive session and reconvene. We will adjourn into executive session and reconvene. Thank you.
May concern, I am writing to express my interest in serving on the Seneca County Board of Health. Tiffin has been my home since 1993. I graduated from both Tiffin Columbian and Heidelberg University and am proud to raise my family in Tiffin. I am the mother of nine children, raging in age from 22 to four years of age, and have had the opportunity to homeschool them since 2005. My whole family remains in Seneca County, and I have a desire to serve the community that has been my home for so long. I currently serve on the Board of Weekday Religious Education and After School Program, which has been serving the community for 80 years. I have had the privilege to serve on that board for over 10 years. I'm also very active in our local homeschool community and in my church. I own a small business called Freeze Dried Ohio and have enjoyed an encouraging welcome into the business community here in Tiffin. I am very interested in serving Seneca County by providing my input as a mother and businesswoman on the important issues that affect us all. I experienced firsthand how the COVID pandemic, through its statewide mandates, affected local businesses and children's education. I strongly believe that the local Board of Health should be comprised of citizens who represent the values of the local communities, businesses, and families. Please consider my interest in serving on the Seneca County Board of Health. Sincerely, Mary Franks.
Thank you. This letter will also be held on file in the clerk's office. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address counsel may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. As a reminder, I know we have quite a few people attending this evening. Please ensure your comments do not exceed a total of five minutes. And that may not be needed.
You're supposed to sign? Is there someone I'm supposed to sign?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. I'm a resident of Seneca County. I just want to say that enough sufficient time wasn't given for this Board of Health vacancy, and sufficient public notice wasn't given, I believe. So I think the deadline should be extended so that all interested applicants have time to go through the proper vetting process so they can be considered for this appointment. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address counsel this evening? Okay. Thank you very much. We are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? Councilmember Spar?
Yes, I have a few.
Okay. Figure.
I move to remove from the table Resolution 22-34.
There is a motion to remove Resolution 22-34. Is there a second? Councilmember Leopard?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote by this by an all-in-favor vote. So all in favor of passing this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion carries. Councilmember Spar?
I move to remove from the table Resolution 22-35, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion to remove from the table Resolution 22-35. Is there a second? Councilmember Leopard?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Councilmember Spar?
Madam President, I move to remove from the table, table, excuse me, ordinance number 22-104.
Thank you. There is a motion to remove ordinance 22-104 from the table. Is there a second? Councilmember Perry?
Yeah, I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion carries. Councilmember Spar?
Madam President, I move to remove from the table ordinance number 22-105.
Thank you. There is a motion to remove ordinance 22-105 from the table. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion carries. Councilmember Spar?
Madam President, I move to remove from the table ordinance number 22-106.
There's a motion to remove ordinance 22-106 from the table. Is there a second? Councilmember Leopard?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion carries. Councilmember Spar?
Madam President, I move to remove from the table ordinance number 22-107.
Thank you. There's a motion to remove ordinance 22-107 from the table. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion carries. Councilmember Spar?
I have a question. The amendments to ordinance, they happen now with during motions as well. Okay. So, Madam President, I move to amend ordinance 22-105 as written.
There is a motion to amend ordinance 22-105 as proposed. Is there a second? Councilmember Perry?
Yeah, I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion carries. Councilmember Spar?
Madam President, I move to amend ordinance number 22-107 as proposed.
There is a motion to amend ordinance 107 as proposed. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Law Director?
Yeah, if I could just offer for clarification, in your packet, you received the red line changes, showing the changes from what was introduced to what is being amended. And we also identified that by substitute ordinance. So because they were so lengthy, it wasn't something that you could just go and make a few notations on the actual document. But you see through the red lines, it was somewhat extensive. And so I identified those as substitute ordinance 22-105 and 22- substitute ordinance 22-107. And so I think the records should reflect that that's, you're amending it by substitute ordinance 105, substitute ordinance 107. So make it very clear, and those will be the documents that are part of the clerk's records.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Spar?
So do you want me to restate those that way?
I think as long as you just accept that that's what you were referring to when you talked about the proposed changes.
Okay, so my motions to amend those, both 22-105 and 22-107, or with the substitute ordinances 22-105 and 22-107, has submitted to the clerk.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion to amend ordinance 107? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Any other motions this evening? Okay, yes. No suspension. Kevin?
Do you then after you read it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. If no further motions, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number 22-34, introduced by John Spar. A resolution approving a petition, articles of incorporation, and initial plan for the City of Tiffin, Seneca County, Ohio, Energy Special Improvement District, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first, or the third reading, excuse me, of Resolution 22-34. Councilmember Spar?
Madam President, I move that we accept Resolution 22-34.
There's a motion to pass Resolution 22, your, Resolution 22-34. Is there a second? Councilmember Leopard?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Resolution 22-34 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution number 22-35, introduced by John Spar. A resolution declaring the necessity of acquiring and constructing certain public improvements in cooperation with the City of Tiffin, Seneca County, and the Ohio Energy Special Improvement District, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of Resolution 22-35. Councilmember Spar?
Madam President, I move that we pass Resolution 22-35.
There's a motion for passage of Resolution 22-35. Is there a second? Councilmember Leopard?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Resolution 22-35 passes with a vote of seven to zero. This is the first reading of Resolution 22-40. Councilmember Perry?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for passage of Resolution 22-40.
There's a motion for passage of Resolution 22-40. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a reappointment of Matthew Kennedy to the TMAC. He was on there for one year, and now it's going to be several years. That's the reason he's being...
If they so choose.
Because it's a new group, and I was kind of confused how he's getting reappointed. But so it's after a one-year term, I think.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Resolution 22-40 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution number 22-41, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving mayor's reappointment of Susan Herring Howard to serve a term on the Julia M. Weller Memorial Commission from January 1, 2023 until December 31, 2027.
This is the first reading of Resolution 22-41. Councilmember Perry?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for passage of Resolution 22-41.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Resolution 22-41. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker?
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Resolution 22-41 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution number 22-42, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving mayor's appointment of Troy TJ McKee Jr. to serve a term on the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission from January 1, 2023 until December 31, 2027.
This is the first reading of Resolution 22-42. Councilmember Perry?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for passage of Resolution 22-42.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage of Resolution 22-42. Is there a second? Councilmember Wilkins?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Resolution 22-42 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution number 22-40. Resolution approving mayor's reappointment of Dr. Sarah Sewell, VO, to serve a term on the Seneca County Board of Health from January 1, 2023 until December 31, 2027.
This is the first reading of Resolution 22-40. Councilmember Perry?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for passage of Resolution 22-40.
There's a motion for passage of Resolution 22-40. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a reappointment of Matthew Kennedy to the TMAC. He was on there for one year, and now it's going to be several years. That's the reason he's being...
If they so choose.
Because it's a new group, and I was kind of confused how he's getting reappointed. But so it's after a one-year term, I think.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Resolution 22-40 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution number 22-40. Resolution approving mayor's reappointment of Matthew Kennedy to serve a term on the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission from January 1, 2023 until December 31, 2027.
This is the first reading of Resolution 22-40. Councilmember Perry?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for passage of Resolution 22-40.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage of Resolution 22-40. Is there a second? Councilmember Wilkins?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Resolution 22-40 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution number 22-43, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving mayor's appointment of Dr. Sarah Sewell, VO, to serve a term on the Seneca County Board of Health from January 1, 2023 until December 31, 2027.
This is the first reading of Resolution 22-43. Councilmember Perry?
Thank you. After listening to the email, or the letter that we had, Mary Franks has nine kids. I just can't imagine the patience this lady has. I want to have lunch with her first. And again, I do know Dr. Sarah. She's a fantastic person. I think she's a great human. She'd also be a great Seneca County Board member. However, my feeling is always that I like to give the public as much notice to reach out to us, and, you know, it doesn't hurt to read it three times. I've always had that opinion as I've been on council. So it would be, I would, my recommendation, or whatever, would be to also read it three times to let the public, you know, have input and...
Thank you, Councilmember Thacker.
Could I just ask a point of clarification? So will Dr. Akers be done at the end of the year? So there will be a vacancy for an extra month on this board? Okay, that's what I assumed, but thanks.
Mayor?
I think I just want to explain this and address this a little bit. Your council president and I have various duties that we're supposed to fulfill, and we both get lists of positions we're supposed to fill. We don't make announcements to the public. We pay attention to who we're around, who we think would be a good choice. People will come up to us and say, hey, I'd really like to serve on that board if it ever comes up. And that's how it happens. It's not like it's advertised. It's not like we do anything with it. And it just feels like there's nefarious things going on here. It just feels different this time. I don't understand what the big deal is. It almost feels a little political, and I'm not sure why that's happened with this. This lady, I don't know either lady, but she comes to me from the Health Department, highly recommended. She's a pediatric doctor. Wouldn't you want a doctor on that committee? And that's why Ann Goon suggested to her, to me in the first place, because Dr. Akers was going off and she wanted a doctor on that committee. And so I saw her resume. I went through the resume and thought it was an awesome suggestion, and that's who they suggested, and that's why I put it forward. And so I just wanted to explain that a little bit. It's not like we put out asking for resumes and people to fill these positions. We go by the people we meet in our lives. Mayor Montz did this before me. All mayors have done this before me. So it's nothing unusual going on here. It's just how we do business. So I just wanted to explain that.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this resolution? Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. Talking about the same subject, when someone in the Second Ward reaches out to myself, I'm representing that person. I'm representing the Second Ward. And if they wanted me to bring it up tonight and do what I can do, that's serving my Second Ward constituents, so. And like you said, I told someone on the phone this was new to me, and someone said, you heard about it on December 13th. December 13th, was that the previous meeting? And I guess I went back, and I guess it was brought up on the 13th, but it was just another, use the word rubber stamp thing, okay? Heard about on the 13th?
If I can just comment on that, though. It's not, it's not a rubber stamp, because we do have it read under written communications, and we refer, I refer to a committee. It was Personnel and Labor Relations, and I believe, Danny, correct me, or excuse me, Councilmember Perry, correct me if I'm wrong, but he had asked if anybody had the opposition for the legislation to be prepared. So at that time, I mean, that really opened it up for any discussion from us regarding that. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, that it's not just a rubber stamp, that just, anything that goes under written communications is prepared as legislation. Councilmember Leopard?
Thank you. Just as a point of information, I don't like to play the R, D, and I cards. I play the person that comes to us with the best recommendations, resumes, and actually speaking with those people. This is the first time in my 19 years on council that we have questioned mayor's or a president's appointment.
Any other discussion on this resolution? Councilmember Wilkins?
I just have a question. How would Mary Franks have, how would she have gone about approaching you knowing the seat would have been open? I know that you said Ann Goon had recommended Dr. Sarah. How could she have gone through the same process to be considered? Like, how would somebody know the general public, you know, a regular citizen? How would they have known that that was even opening up?
Well, listening to the council meeting, I didn't, I was not aware it was opening up till recently either.
Okay.
And so when they send out the information to me to read it and research it, that's how it came to my attention just recently.
Okay.
And so if it does come to someone's attention, they can contact the office, and Nick will put them in touch with me. And I keep a list of people that contact me on what they're interested in, and if I think they're a good fit. It's not a rubber stamp with that either. If I think they're a good fit, I will put them forward. And I felt she was a good fit.
So from what I'm understanding, it's kind of like grassroots, like someone knows that the position's opening up, and they just kind of give you a call. It's, there's no formal process for an appointment to the Seneca County Board.
No. I actually have several things that I need to appoint, and they don't meet. And Nick and I laugh about that all the time. I actually have made calls to people I know, I need a warm body. Would you be willing to serve? They do not meet, but we have to fill the positions. And so it's actually difficult to get them filled. And every time I think I'm done, Nick tells me there's another one. And so we are constantly filling positions. And like I said, I go by what I think is a good fit. And I did not know of Mary Franks, but I would still recommend Sarah Sewell, because like I said, they want a doctor on there, and she's highly recommended, and a pediatric background. So how can you be better than that? That's a good fit.
Councilmember Leopard?
Thank you. How are we going to proceed with this now? Are we going to have a committee meeting and interview the people, or what's the procedure?
Law Director?
Yeah, if I can make a comment, it is your appointment to confirm. I mean, it's the mayor's appointment by contract and by statute, and your responsibility is to confirm that appointment by legislation, by resolution. And also just to comment on whether anybody knew, I believe the Board of Health is a public body, and they hold meetings. There's information on their website about their terms. So if somebody was following that, I know we have people that follow city council meetings, and they come to meetings on a regular basis, and so they probably find out this information. So that is aware, people should be aware of that if they had an interest in this particular public body. Dr. Akers' term was set forth in a resolution by city council that you approved a few years ago. So again, it was publicly noted that it was expiring on this date. So if somebody had an interest in the public body, they could have been aware of this and probably contacted the mayor, or the health, the Board of Health, or the Health Commissioner to express an interest.
Thank you. In my opinion, I would like to be conscious of the seat being delayed as far as being vacant, vacant any longer. And reading it three times, I think, gives the appropriate public opportunity for those to attend meetings who are interested or have opposition to express their feelings, and then we would obviously vote on it as normal. I think referring it back to a committee, or the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, specifying the public infrastructure improvements to be made that directly benefit such real property, authorizing the distribution of the applicable portion of those service payments to the Tiffin City School District and Vanguard Sentinel Career Technology Centers, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 22-104. Councilmember Spar?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to ask for passage of ordinance 22-104.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage of ordinance 22-104. Is there a second? Councilmember Perry?
Yes, I second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Perry?
Thank you. I would just would like to ask Brett maybe for this one and the next three, just for the public's benefit, to kind of, in layman's terms, explain what these are, you know, touching, because they are kind of, I want to say, a lot of words in there, but just to, you know, explain the Riverfront Project and stuff.
Yeah, the 22-104, what that does is it it allows for the property at where Kier's Speed Shop is located. It allows for a TIF, a tax increment financing, to be established for that property so that public improvements related to that property can be paid for in part by payments in lieu of taxes. What that means is that as that property increases in value based on the improvements that are being made, the taxes for that are redirected, not given to the county auditor to disperse as they and treasurer to disperse as they typically are, but they're used to pay towards the improvements that are being done on the property. The law specifies that only certain types of improvements can be made. So they can be used for property acquisition, some other things that are maybe integral parts of the the private project that we think of, but then also can be used for things that are related to parking nearby. And so that's what allows this to happen for this property in general terms.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, oh, yes, Clerk of Council?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question for the Director of Law. Is this the one we need to amend for the parking?
No, we're going to have a separate ordinance in the future.
Future, okay.
To deal with adding parking to the Exhibit B, also possibly deal with the issues of how it relates with the CRA that's in the area, and then also to approve a cooperative agreement with the private property owner that will get into the agreement on how the TIF proceeds are used, what contributions are being made towards public, the parking in the nearby area, what access and use rights do we have to the actual building being constructed to. And we've I've got an initial draft of an easement that gives the public certain rights to the property. But that's going to be further negotiated, and we'll come back in a month or more probably to explain to council what exactly the TIF proceeds will be used for, at least the categories of of the uses.
Councilmember Reesner?
The terms for 30 years or up to 30 years, it says here?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, I will ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-104 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Substitute ordinance number 22-105, introduced by John Spar. An ordinance authorizing the city's participation in financing special energy improvement projects, authorizing the execution of documents to effectuate such financing, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 22-105. Councilmember Spar?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to ask for passage of substitute ordinance 22-105.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of ordinance, substitute ordinance 22-105. Is there a second? Councilmember Wilkins?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-105 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 22-106, an ordinance determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in cooperation with the city of Tiffin, Seneca County, and the Ohio Energy Special Improvement District, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 22-106. Councilmember Spar?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to ask for passage of ordinance 22-106.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of ordinance 22-106. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-106 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Substitute ordinance number 22-107, introduced by John Spar. An ordinance levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, instructing, and improving certain public improvements in cooperation with the city of Tiffin, Seneca County, and the Ohio Energy Special Improvement District, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of substitute ordinance 22-107. Councilmember Spar?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to ask for passage of substitute ordinance 22-107.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage of substitute ordinance 22-107. Is there a second? Councilmember Perry?
Yeah, I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, if I could.
Yep, sorry, Law Director.
I think to answer Councilmember Perry's question, you also ask about these last three.
Right.
Ordinances. And so let me give you a high level. And we have more of an expert, Mr. Rogers here, if I if I misstate this. But just to give you a high level, what's happening here is is that we are following some statutes that provide for when there is energy efficiency that's built into a project, certain aspects of a project. So it promotes those type of improvements on property. And if somebody is willing to take on those parts of the project, then this allows for the financing of those money now to be to be paid for by special assessments placed on the property so that a lender can lend money now, and they know that the payment is going to be paid through these special assessments over a period of years. And that's a pretty good bet, I guess, you know, for financing. What you're doing is you're allowing this property because you have a, you have to, you have to pass this legislation in order for this type of financing to take place. But it's just on this property. So basically, you're saying, yes, this property will be specially assessed. They will be required to make these kind of special assessment payments. But allowing, again, to do this allows the developer to go and, in the cases Mr. Rogers explained, to issue bonds, to provide the funds to be able to now pay for the improvements that are going to happen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on this ordinance? Okay, we will vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-107 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 22-108, introduced by Kevin Reesner. An whole ordinance appropriating certain sums from all city funds for current and other expenditures of the city of Tiffin for fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and ending December 31, 2023.
It's your turn now, Councilmember Reesner.
I move for the passage of ordinance 22-108.
There is a motion for passage of ordinance 22-108. Is there a second? Councilmember Wilkins?
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-108 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 22-109, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds and payment of bond and loan principal and interest, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 22-109. Councilmember Reesner?
I move for the passage of ordinance 22-109, Madam President.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage of ordinance 22-109. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 22-110, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds from the 101 General Fund to the 242 Park and Recreation Fund, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 22-110. Councilmember Reesner?
Madam President, I move for the passage of ordinance 22-110.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage, ordinance 22-110. Is there a second? Councilmember Spar?
Yes, Madam President, I second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-110 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 22-111, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds from the 552 Sewer Revenue Fund to the 557 Combined Sewer Separation Fund, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 22-111. Councilmember Reesner?
I move for the passage of ordinance 22-112, Madam President.
111.
111.
That's okay. There is a motion for passage of ordinance 22-111. Is there a second? Councilmember Perry?
Yeah, I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 22-112, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending and restating ordinance number 21-110, the city pay ordinance to comply with the state of Ohio minimum wage law, to establish appropriate rates of compensation for certain city employees, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 22-112. Councilmember Reesner?
I move for the passage of ordinance 22-112, Madam President.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage of ordinance 22-112. Is there a second? Councilmember Wilkins?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-112 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 22-117, introduced by Vicki Wilkins. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a lease of a portion of Eagle Rock Business Park for farming purposes, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 22-117.
Ordinance number 22-118, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance approving the agreement between the city of Tiffin and Suter Pearson Properties LLC, or Real Property Owner of 870 West Market Street, Tiffin, Ohio, for the abatement of certain real property taxes for five years, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 22-118.
Ordinance number 22-119, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending budget ordinance 21-105 to make year-end budget adjustments and approve necessary transfers, and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-119. Councilmember Reesner?
Suspension.
Councilmember Reesner?
I move for the immediate passage of ordinance 22-19, suspending city council's three-reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 22-119. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Perry?
Thank you. Just looking at, I mean, all these, you know, just looking at this briefly, just wanted to see, I just saw one that I had a question on. It'd be that 786, it said 470,000 increased employee share. I wonder if Kathy could touch on that.
Finance Director, if you mind?
Yeah, that has to do with the employer's share of the health insurance. The employees pay 20%, and the city pays 80%. So when we budget for that, we budget what we think we're going to spend. And then throughout the year, if there's any changes, like if if other employees go to family, then that increases also their share and also the employer's share.
Okay.
So we were a little bit short there. We need to add $20,000 for that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
Yes.
Thacker?
Yes.